All right. All right, council, I want to call this committee the whole meeting for July 15, 2021 to order with an adoption of the Afghanistan law to make that motion, councillor Palmer, seconded by councillor Charlett, all in favor. Motion's carried, adoption of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole for June 10, 2021. So we want to make that motion, councillor Charlett, seconded by councillor Palmer, all in favor. Motion's carried, any business arising from those minutes. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to announcements from the mayor. So this past week, I've had several phone calls and several emails from members of the community asking me about our emergency plan. So definitely the city of Revelstoke does have an emergency plan. We don't activate our emergency plan unless there's an incident, but we have trained staff that operate the Emergency Operations Centre and all of our staff are ready to go at a moment's notice. We are in consistent contact with our PRIOC, which is our provincial regional emergency operations centre in Kamloops. And if we need to do something in a heartbeat, we are there to do it. So I just want to let the community know that definitely we are ready to go. We're in contact with CSRD and the Shishawap Emergency Programme, people on a regular basis every day. And so definitely, if something happens, if there is an incident, then we are ready to roll. So I just want people to understand that. We won't make announcements as to where people evacuate and that sort of thing until we know what the incident is and where we're at. So just know that we're ready to go. So thank you for your understanding of that. We have a delegation today, so Revelstoke Victim Services, Smelnick and your colleague, you're here, are you ready to go? We cannot hear you.
Can you hear us?
We can, it's very faint, but we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, you're very faint on that side too, your worship. So if I speak up a little bit like this, is it better?
That's great, Stephanie, thank you.
Okay. And can I just ask, who is in the room with you?
I have our C A O and Mr. Roman Tucci, councillor Tim Palmer and councillor Nicole Charlett, and councillor Jackie Ryan will be here momentarily. And then online, we have our staff as well.
I see that, yeah, excellent. It was just the video resolution. It was very hard to see who was in the room. Thank you.
I have the add at the end of the room.
What was that, sorry?
The add you see on your screen at the end of the room.
Okay, okay, excellent. And I'm taking it, I have about 10 minutes here, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So I know it's very hard through Teams for sure, even when a delegation is present in person to keep it engaging and also conversationally based. So I'm going to encourage everyone, if you have questions, please jump in. I said to Jess earlier, I don't have high hopes, though. Teams is not really conducive to that, but we'll do our best here. And also, I'll just say, as a side note, anyone who wants to follow up further with either of us afterwards, please do so. We don't get enough opportunities to engage and keep staff and city council updated with what's happening with the program. And it is a City of Revelstoke program, so that's just an open invitation to all of you. So I think we're here today because of the report that I had given to Sergeant Dawes. It is an annual RCMP statistical report that I provide for the Victim Services Program. And there were a couple of themes arising from it. I normally do a bit of analysis and try to distill down what the statistics mean. I believe Sergeant Dawes brought that to the managers' meeting. And so we're just here today to give you an update on what 2020 looks like, also answer any questions if you have them. And for those councillors that haven't heard me speak before, this is going to be a really quick overview of what the Victim Services Program actually is. So I'll start with, sorry, just another question, actually, before I start. Can you see the presentation at all?
No, it's not shared.
No, okay.
In our package, we have it on our iPad, but we don't have it on the big screen.
Okay, that's just good to know. I will not say things like, next slide, please, then. I'll just move through. And again, please just jump in if anyone has any questions whatsoever. So if I start with just a general idea of what the Victim Services Program is, you will be able to refer to the slide pack, that first slide. Oh, here we go, I can see it now. It looks like Jelene's working in the background, maybe. So if we go to the next slide, please. This diagram gives you an idea of just high level, what the Victim Services Program is about. So there are four areas in this circle that show you what the province mandates a police-based victim services program to do. The biggest area is court support. It really is complex and also takes up the majority of the files that Jess and I work on. I guess I should introduce you too, Jess. I assumed everyone knew Jess, but she is actually a bit of a new addition to Victim Services last year in January. So right before the pandemic started, Jess joined as a paid member of the Victim Services Staff. And that's the first time that this program has ever had two paid workers. So this is a very welcome addition and much appreciated. So that court support.
Jess, can you just slide over a bit so we can see your face? Little more, there you go. Welcome. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, it's very, very fun being in the detachment because we're both brunettes. If we're sitting at the computer and people are walking by behind us, they never know which one of us it is. And so we can have a lot of fun with that. It's really great. Yeah. Okay, so as for what we do, court support is a really, really big piece of it. And helping people go through, starting with the police investigation phase, all the way through to Crown's approval of the charges, then the court system takes over. There are multiple appearances and ultimately, most of the files end up in trial. And so that process is about, it can last one to two years. So it really is a big part of what we do in supporting people through it. It can be convoluted. It seems to be different for every single person that follows the path. So we're just there walking beside them, trying to help them navigate and getting them what they need as they go through. Another piece that we're mandated to do is practical support. And that's a bit of a catchall in that it can be anything from helping people apply for funding so they can attend counselling after they've been impacted by a crime or by trauma. It can be helping someone apply for legal aid or give them forms, point them to the right websites on where they can apply for these programs. Or it can be as kind of unique as liaising with a dealership after someone has had a break into their car and they just need some help figuring out how to increase security. So really, what's happened, I think, is over the years, there have been gaps in service as far as what the police can provide, what the court system can provide, what other community agencies can provide. And Victim Services is kind of the response to those gaps. So we really do just fill in kind of the pieces. The emotional support piece is very clearly defined as being not counselling. But it can help for people to just sit in a confidential space without judgment, to just get everything out on the table and then have someone who's a bit impartial help them prioritize. And I feel like that's kind of the biggest piece of what we do in that emotional support, validating people's experiences, which can be a bit empowering. It can help people regain some of the power they've lost after being victimized. But then also, it can just help them figure out, what do I do first in my life to kind of get it back together again? And then the last piece is making referrals. That's also a big part of what we do, is help people connect with other programs and organizations that we have in the community. And we work really cooperatively with the whole social sector in Revelstoke. Now, the three boxes that you can see on the right there, those are kind of like the overarching philosophies, if you will. All of the work that we do, we attempt to be victim centered. This is about the person who's been harmed. It's not about us. It's not about other people in the system. It's about them, making sure that what they're getting, what they need. We encourage participation. This is another piece of what we're mandated to do from the province. But I like the word encourage because it doesn't force participation, it presents choice to people. So we're encouraging participation in every stage of the justice system. And then lastly, we're advocates. We're trying very hard to advocate for change, for positive change. Whenever there have been challenges for people, then we help them navigate that challenge in the moment. But then we bring that problem forward, either on a provincial level or a local level, whatever needs to happen to try and improve whatever challenge someone hasn't captured. Yeah, okay. So we'll go to the next slide. This is a really quick overview of kind of the structure of the program. So I'm the program manager and I'm on 25-hour-a-week contract with the city. It's a subcontract. Jess is on a parallel subcontract with the city. She's paid 15 hours per week. And because these are subcontracts with the city, there's a bit of awkwardness because the money is coming from primarily the Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General. The city of Revelstoke does add in in-kind and some cash to that contract. But the ministry really prefers this to be a direct contract where the ministry would be paying money to the organization that employs the people running the program. So we have an extra layer in there. There are lots of awkward situations like this across the province, but it's definitely something we should revisit at some point. As far as our caseload, we see about between 80 to 100 new clients every year. This can be anything from a brief service contact where someone just passing through or who's been mildly harmed, if we can say. It needs a couple of hours of course correct or connection to a service. Could be a relationship that lasts two to three years, depending on how long the court system takes. So there's a big variety in that type of support that we offer clients. And then our response can vary as well. We can have on-scene response, which we are trying to get away from a little bit, seeing as we are not first responders. Just as an aside to that, our main focus is to add value to whatever situation we're involved in. And so if we are being called to the scene, the conversation is about what value are we going to add on scene? And if there is something we can do to make things better or help the other first responders, we are absolutely able to do that. We do have a lot of meetings with people, victims and survivors in the office. And that face-to-face really makes a big difference when someone is in shock or really in crisis. That's been a bit of a challenge through the pandemic, of course, but we've been creative about that. We also can follow up at a later time. So the police might offer Victim Services in the moment and someone might decline, but there might be the opportunity to then follow up and connect later. We do have quite a few clients actually who don't connect with us until they get to the court system stage. And then court involvement is actually the other piece of it. We do accompaniment, we liaise with Crown, we just try to smooth out all those rough edges of the legal system. They're definitely awkward. So if we go to the next slide, then you'll see that we have some mandates. This kind of refers back to what I mentioned about us being a program that was developed to identify or to address gaps. We are part of the legislation provincially for the Victims of Crime Act. Victim Services is named in there with a few responsibilities, like I've already mentioned. Also federally, there's the crime, the victims of crime. And that mandate actually has a lot of kind of codified rights for victims of crime. And so, yeah, that one is definitely fixing those gaps kind of thing. So it's a patchwork of legislation that's been developed, and that's how Victim Services came about. The only trick is that there is a bit of a conflicting mandate. So we are asked to have victim-centric support. That's one of the philosophies that is codified in the legislation. But at the same time, we are supposed to encourage participation in the legal system. And I think we've been finding more and more, you know, Jess has been here for over a year and a half now, but I've also certainly noticed over the last two to three years, those two things are in direct conflict. Oftentimes, not participating in the justice system is better for someone's healing, it's better for their life to move forward, and it prevents them from being revictimised from the system. So what we take away from that is making it as individual as possible. So having the conversation with the person individually to make sure that if they are moving forward as a witness who's going to testify in court, it is on their terms and it's with all of the, yeah, their choice, yeah, exactly, that they have to make that choice and that we'll support them with whatever path it is they take. But we can do a really good job of laying out what the options are and what the upsides are to participating. And then the other piece that I take away from that is that there's more advocacy work for us to do there so that we can make sure that the system improves and then has more benefits for someone to testify and to participate. That's ultimately what we want, right? We want a court system that works well, that helps offenders see what they've done wrong, make changes in their lives to make better decisions moving forward, but then also for victims and survivors to find some closure and some healing. And the current state of the legal system is not really doing much of that from our perspective. Yeah. All right, so if we move on to the next slide, this is what I was talking about with the report that I had given to the RCMP. We do a number of reports throughout the year. The biggest overview is the statistical report for the RCMP that's on an annual basis. But the Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General also requires a monthly statistical report. And it's a little more detailed, but we do that on a monthly basis. So when I do that annual overview, some of the trends really bubble to the surface. And one of the things I noticed from 2020 is kind of in line with what the RCMP saw, that our client numbers were down. We were down about 17%. It's a little more than what the RCMP was down. But our court files went up, even though our number of files went down. So this increase to 33 court files actually is a bit more significant in the context of the number of overall files going down. And then this next bullet is really what I wanted to highlight for everyone today, is that 35% of our clients were from out of town last year. So that's something that we track quite closely because it makes for, I don't know, a lot more problem solving or a different complexity to the support that we provide when someone doesn't reside in Revelstoke and they go back home, but they're still engaged in the police investigation or they're still needed in the court system, or they still have healing needs that happened in our location and they're now back home where no one knew what happened to them here. So I found us 35% last year, being very surprising because a number of years ago, when I started this work, I was quite stable at 25% of my caseload being out-of-towners. So a quarter of the people that I was supporting were from elsewhere. It could be somewhere else in B C, but definitely a lot of other Canadians and certainly international travelers made up that 25%. But then for the two years leading up to last year's unusual year, it stabilized at 40% for people from out of town that made up our client list. That was quite a big jump. And that was where the staff sergeant at the time, Kurt Leginsky, and I made a plea to the city to have Jess hired because this was a, yeah, this was a big jump in workload. So that kind of stabilized at 40%. And then when we had the pandemic travel restrictions, I was expecting that number to go back down to 25% or even lower, given that there were travel restrictions, and it just didn't. It was 35% last year. And it makes me very nervous for what that's going to look like going forward now, now that everything's opened up again. So I'm generally a positive person and generally a glass half-full person, but I just did want to highlight that tourism is not all good news for our town. The social sector in general struggles quite a bit with the impacts of tourism. And I know that here in Victim Services, we struggle with providing good quality support to people who are harmed while they're on vacation in our town, and then they leave again to go back to wherever, into a community that we don't know, we're not familiar with the supports, and they may not be familiar with our court system. It's a big challenge. It's a really big challenge. So I think I've said enough about how the resources and time are required. Much, there are much higher requirements for out-of-town clients. But I did want to just plant the seed that maybe there's an opportunity to look for funding or a different structure, and I'll get more into that just in my last slide here, just some creative solution of some kind to address the negative impacts of tourism. There are lots of dollars coming through our community. I know we're not capturing them properly already for so many things, including the sewer system, our roads, and any another number of things from, you know, from our roads to Victim Services. But I've been trying to put my mind to this a lot lately, trying to figure out what would help. And I know this is a common theme across the whole social sector as well. So I just wanted to highlight that. If we move to the next.
At this point, can I just ask you a question?
Please, yes, go ahead.
When we're talking about the tourists coming into town and if they're ending up being your client, they've been affected by crime in some way. Is there a certain demographic? Are we, are we talking male, female, a certain age group, or is it just across the board? No certain parameters with that?
Right, yeah, from my experience, it's been across the board. So it could be anything from someone from Australia or Europe who's here on a ski season and then is sexually assaulted at a party. It could be a fatal car accident on the highway. It could be family violence, which could include children being impacted. Yeah, it really is all demographics, I would say. What do you think?
Yeah, I would agree with that. The family violence one is what comes to mind in the file that I'm thinking of. Certainly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, we'll just wind up really quickly here. I don't want to take up too much more time, but if we move to the next slide, then I've already touched on court support. I would love to go on and on about this because I have all kinds of ideas on how we can improve the justice system. Jess and I have been on a lot of webinars lately where people have moved away from even calling it the justice system. It's now being called the legal system because there isn't a lot of justice to be found. It's a bit cynical, but I think we're both a little more positive about it, thinking there are opportunities for improvement. And I see a lot of, a lot of interest at all levels, you know, with our interactions with Crown Council, our interactions with the police, with probation, with all the different kind of people who work in the system, a lot of interest in making improvements. We all work with human beings at the end of the day, and we can see that not all humans are being served well by the current structures. So I'll just kind of gloss over that one for now, and we can skip to the last slide now, thanks. This is what I also wanted to focus on, on what we can do moving forward. So we had a really lovely webinar actually recently where someone said, the courtroom was supposed to be a place where those of us who were paid created space for everyone else to figure out their solutions. So it was a place to air grievances and then resolve them. And that's not what's happening right now. Right now, all of the people who are being paid, the attorneys, the judge, they're all the ones doing the talking. They're using all the airspace and there isn't that space for the people who've actually been impacted to have their say or to be able to speak in their own words. So that's kind of an advocacy piece I see for Victim Services, even across the province, to help create that space so that people can get what they need out of the system. What I mean by stable funding and stable employment is just about the various structures that exist across the province for Victim Services. There are not only police-based Victim Services, but there's also community-based. And I am engaged on a provincial level to try and improve standardizing the delivery of police-based Victim Services, but also standardizing how the contracts are administered, just so that it's more stable and we can just keep people in their roles longer. You know, there's been a lot of turnover recently, and we've been quite impacted because Vernon has lost her program manager. Well, I shouldn't say lost, she resigned under incredible stress. Colonna's program manager was fired. Kamloops' program manager resigned, and Sam and Arms program manager for Police Victim Services was on leave due to a family emergency. So it, yeah, I think how this program is treated across the province is impacting everybody else. So I think there's a lot we can do there. And locally, we could maybe revisit this subcontract structure and see if there's maybe some stabilizing that we can do there. One really great, great piece of news here is that the staffing, in my opinion, is working really well. So having myself as program manager, Jess as the caseworker, it's really fantastic. It's lovely that there are two of us here, so a client can see who they connect with better, they have a choice of who they work with. We can both put ourselves on one file if it really needs that extra attention. We just have flexibility by having two of us. And I really appreciate it having Jess here. So it's, that's really helped me out. And then lastly, just again, to plant that seed for any kind of creative solution that we can find together for capturing some dollars from the tourism sector to try and help with those negative impacts of tourism. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but if anyone's having conversations about it, I'm super keen to be a part of that.
And so we'll have that, I'll have that discussion with, with some of the staff that deal with that kind of funding and see if there's a way to look at that as we move forward and just, and just go from there. I want to thank you both for, for the work that you do in the community. And I know that on a professional level, I get to see you in my professional capacity, and that's always a sad time, but I appreciate the fact that you're both there to help the community and indefinitely with, with the victim-based stuff as well, so that people feel comfortable. We know how the court system works and we know that unfortunately, with time constraints nowadays, the word compassion really doesn't play into it. It's pretty much, let's get it done sort of thing. So we do appreciate what you're doing. So I'm going to ask if any of the councillors have any questions or comments for you before you go. Any comments, questions?
Some commented about the resort, like the RMI funds and the MRDT, I mean, maybe not MRDT, but the RMI funds. I know that they're very focused on customer experience, tourist experience and things like that, and mostly infrastructure, but I wonder if that might be part of that conversation.
That's something we can ask Ms. Braun to, to evaluate and actually take up with her and have that conversation with Victim Services firsthand.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And to see if maybe Ms. Braun has, has seen other communities find creative ways of kind of framing that.
Also, Charlett, any questions?
No, it's nice to hear an overview of the program and to hear how things are going with the additional caseworker involved. And this is important work, and I'm glad to hear about the advocacy work you guys are doing in that larger provincial level to better sync up the efforts. We live in a nomadic society where we move around a lot, and I'm grateful to hear that the people that provide the supports are trying to line that up between communities. It's unfortunate there's been so much staff turnover. Hopefully, things stabilize for you guys.
Okay, councillor Palmer.
Thank you, Mary. Can we have the screen just so I can see Stephanie and Jess? The team screen.
Jelene, can you just stop sharing briefly so that we can see Stephanie and Jess?
Great, thanks. Thank you for the presentation, the information. Victim Services has definitely transitioned over, over the years. I note, many, many years ago, the Victim Services coordinator was more of a coordinator of volunteers. I'm guessing that that has moved on, or do you have volunteers, or is it basically the two of you?
Right, yeah, that's actually a very good point. No, the, there are no volunteers in the Revelstoke program. And provincially, everyone is moving away from that model. It is just not the level of professionalism that's needed, especially if you think about a caseworker supporting someone through a two-year justice system pathway, for example. Volunteers just tend not to be available or to stick around long enough, and also to have the depth of experience. Yeah, so generally across the province, the best practice now is to dissolve the volunteer program and have only paid workers doing that work. and have only paid workers doing that work.
Right, okay, that makes sense to me. On the contract, you talked about some of the conflicts or challenges around the contract. So you are essentially a contractor to the city, but some places that's in the province, if I'm hearing you correctly, would prefer that you were directly contracted to them?
Yeah, all of the bigger cities are employing the victim services personnel either within the regional district or within the city itself. They are municipal employees or whatever the structure might be, but the smaller communities are the ones who tend to do this kind of subcontract structure. For example, in Chase, it's the Lions Club who contracts with the ministry and then subcontract out to the program manager. But what that does is puts us in a position of being sole proprietors in the eyes of Revenue Canada, but it's not really appropriate because our only client is this one contract, so it doesn't meet the definition of sole proprietor either. So it's a, it's a bit of a being in limbo, but yeah, it's, it's a struggle. I think it's something that we can probably work on.
Because it, it seems to be that, well, I think it's been the case for quite a while. One, one of the underpinned problems to that is who pays for this? The province or the local municipality? In times, a long time ago, this was basically a provincial mandate and the bigger communities have said, okay, well, we have greater needs, so they ended up doing part of the funding. And so I think that's where, and then the smaller communities have the challenge because of limited funds to, to supplement that. And it sounded like the, the city does supplement to a certain extent in kind, and you said a small amount of cash. So that, I think that's the problem and realistically, my perspective, you know, is, is this really the province advocating responsibly or is passive, the down, the classic downloading so they can reduce provincial taxation and put the burden on the local communities? So there, there's a whole philosophical thing there. The interestingly, you talked about conflicting mandates. I'd love to talk more about that, but I think maybe person to person when there's a time to have that discussion.
I would be, yeah, I'd be very open to talking further. I think that would be great, the conflicting mandates in our in our philosophy or how we're meant to carry out the work is, it's an interesting challenge. I think it, it keeps us always on the ball because we're always trying to balance or keep these two things in tension. And even further, if we wanted to talk about the contract structure itself, I don't believe the ministry is looking to take away any funding. I think the money side of it would only be impacted by, by having benefits. That's one of the cost savings that the city has right now is by not paying us any benefits. And yeah, so super happy to talk further about that.
Yeah, I'll probably avoid the contractual, leave that to staff, but
Absolutely.
Yeah, and so, and then my final comment or sort of observation, I guess, is so if I did the math correctly, on average, you're spending 25 hours per, per victim. So whether, now some it's just going to be an hour or something and then others it's going to be much, much more time, but on average, it's about 25 hours per, per victim. So that's an interesting, to me, that's an interesting number because it's a fairly big investment on, when you look at it as an average, so. Yeah, good, thank you very much.
Sergeant Dodd, I see you on the screen. Do you have any comments about the program or wish to impart any information to us?
Your worship, yeah, thanks for inviting me to speak. I, I just wanted to just quickly commend both Stephanie and Jess for their service with the victim service unit, I guess you could call it here at, at our detachment. They are a great resource for our members and they provide, you know, invaluable service for, for the community. And we really, it's tough to function without them because I've been, I've worked in other places where we've lost workers or we didn't have them and the, the members end up doing a lot of this work on their own, so, and referring, et cetera. So it's, it's really important that they exist here at the detachment and it helps us with our, with our day-to-day operations. Now, that's pretty much all I wanted, all I wanted to add and you know, if there's any questions from the police side of things, I can certainly answer those, but they, they, like I say, they're an invaluable asset to our, our operations and, and they're doing a great job.
I appreciate your input. Thank you for being here. So I just asked the councillors, do you have any questions, Sergeant Dodd, regarding the Victims Assistance Program? So yeah, I'm going to thank you all for, for being here and making your presentation. Appreciate seeing you and look forward to working together. Thank you.
Thanks so much for the opportunity.
Thanks, take care. All right, council, we're going to move on to item nine, a staff reports. Liquor primary license discussion paper, Ms. Donato will leave it to you to lead us through this.
Thank you, your worship. So in July of 2020, the Grizzlies general manager made a request to council to consider liquor, to consider pursuing a liquor primary license for the arena facility and have them be the third-party operator. Council referred that back to staff for comment. So this past year, I had the fire inspector and the building inspector do a review of the building in terms of building and fire code requirements. So they provided an assessment on the facility, which is included in your report. There are some outstanding building code and fire code issues with the building itself. It is an old building and it is existing non-conforming. The RCMP have also done a review of the request and provided their comments. And I've laid out some other considerations for the committee as a whole to consider. From staff's perspective, there is no concerns with moving forward with the request that's been brought forward. However, there are some things that we have to work through that may involve us obtaining a code compliance analysis of the building. And we may have to do certain building improvements. So I'm just trying to gain an understanding of how council feels about this process and whether it's something council wants staff to pursue. And I can go into more detail if, if you guys want more detail about the process or any of the code compliance issues.
So just, just to, just a couple of questions from my perspective. When we talk about some of the infrastructure that needs to be done, water closets, egress, that sort of thing. That's expected to be on the city to pick up the tab for that. When we talk about the profits from the liquor license, does that go entirely to the third-party operator or is there something that's going to the city to help defray our costs of infrastructure, but also operating and, and more staff having to be present in the cleanup, that sort of thing?
Yes, any cost to bring the building up to code will be borne by the city. With a liquor primary license, I am anticipating that there'll be more cleanup required at the end of the night. So we currently have two staff on hand for the Grizzly games and during playoff season, there'll always be two, two city staff on shift. However, there's a lot of additional duties that have to be done before we close the facility for the evening. So cleaning an entire facility where liquor is being consumed in all sections of the bleacher can, bleachers can be very time-consuming. And I can't see that staff will be able to complete all their tasks by the end of their shift. Where we run into the problem is when we have early morning ice users coming into the facility and then the facility hasn't been cleaned the night before. That's kind of where the conflict would be. So we may want to consider bringing in a janitorial crew to do the clean of the beer garden area, which would, in this case, be all the spectator seating areas.
And so again, I'm going to go back to the question. Are we going to be a receipt of any of those funds that are garnered from the sale of the beer? Or is it just supposed to be on the city to pay for all of these extra expenses as we move on? I know I'm putting you in an awful situation to ask that question, but I'm going to be blunt about that as we move forward. And I think council needs to know the answer. And then I want councillor Ron to answer a question.
We, we do not receive any additional revenue from beer garden sales. And I would, this is the primary revenue source for the team. So I mean, I could have that discussion with the team and say that, you know, additional cleaning costs you'll be on the hook for, rather than us being on the hook for that. And that's just a conversation that needs to be had.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Ron?
Yeah, I was gonna ask a similar thing. If it's, whether it's just covering the additional fees or maybe it's like a small portion of each sale or something like that. And then if not, if they're not receptive to that, at minimum to pay for any small updates to the building. Like, I don't know how big they would be. Are they thinking that it would be like signage or we need to put in like a new door? Like, what's the scale? I guess you don't know at this point?
At this point, I don't know. Both the fire inspector and the building inspector have suggested that we attain a third party to do a building code compliance analysis. And then in speaking with the liquor inspector, I've brought all this forward to the liquor inspector and basically inquired on who makes the call when the building needs to be upgraded in terms of fire and building code requirements prior to the liquor license being issued. And his comment was that the liquor licensing analyst doesn't get into all those details. As long as they receive a site plan that's stamped and signed off by a fire inspector that outlines the occupant load, they will process the application. So it really falls on the local government on what type of improvements they want to do for their facility in order to accommodate the liquor license for that building. And it, and it would be under the recommendation of the fire inspector and the building inspector.
Do you know if there's, is, is there any has there been any discussion with the Hockey Society about sharing that cost or paying for that cost to have a compliance officer come through? Because if they are going to double their beer sales, I feel like there should be some room in there, but I don't want to make that assumption.
I haven't had that conversation with them yet.
How do you guys feel about that?
Councillor Palmer, thank you, Mary. It seems to me that staff are actually looking for direction from council as to what do we do with this? And I'll, I'll just give a few comments from my perspective. In the, in the report, there's a whole bunch of things. You can see the tax creep. So the tax creep is this thing that happens that we do one good thing, but then there's a whole bunch of implications underneath it creates taxes to increase. And so good idea, probably have increased beer sales, although we may need to increase victim services budget to, to deal with that conflict. We have building improvements that need to be done on a building that, as, as the director said, is legal non-informing and the legal part is probably on the borderline. We already have in the budget this massive cost that will, sorry, Ms. Donato, that I suspect will increase well past the budget to do the roof. And, and an example of that is now we want to increase beer sales to make this facility what we would like it to be in our community. On this old building that should be torn down, in my opinion, and that we should create a facility that is appropriate for our, our community and our community needs. But instead, our direction that we're going is, in my opinion, waste money on a roof. Waste money on improvements that don't bring the building up into proper code. And so from my perspective, coming down, you know, looking at this, we were trying to put the cart before the horse. We need to figure out where we're going with the, the arena in the long term so that we have a complete understanding of, of the kind of costs and how they're going to grow over the years. Because we're going to spend all this money where we could cumulatively, we could take that and have a proper facility if it's well planned. On that basis, I'm going to put a motion on the table that this matter be referred to the finance committee for budget considerations and long-term implications. Because I think we're, so that's my motion. If somebody will second it, then I'll speak to, speak to it.
Okay, so is a second amendment motion? Councillor Charlotte, Councillor Palmer?
Thank you, Councillor Charlotte. So you know, the, the hockey team is really, really important for us. The, the Grizzlies are doing this amazing thing. It's, I, I think, I almost think there should be tourism funds because this is bringing people into our community. It's a, it's a big tourism draw. And we're more successful than, than many, many other communities of similar size because we actually get people to come out. We get the Australians to come out because it's fun. And, you know, so it's an important thing. So I don't want to convey any kind of message of trying to curtail this building on that success. And yet, part of building on that success is, is, is good governance and how do we look after our needs? And I, I really do think that you'll remember my little presentation before I was on council that had people rolling their eyes about, you know, the big legacy projects. I think we are in that pivotal time as we grow in tourism to have a recreation facility, the multipurpose arena that's can be used much more in a, in a bigger way and that it doesn't need to have a significant impact on taxes. I think it could actually possibly be less. And this, as you know, may remember from talking before, it goes to other things. And so I think by doing this to the finance committee, maybe in the short term, it means carrying on with the, the beer sales just as they are. But I think we have the better opportunity for bigger success in the future by, by taking a deeper dive with the finance committee and where can we really go with it?
Any further comment? Go ahead, Councillor Charlotte.
I'm curious whether the finance committee is the right place for the conversation around this because I agree. I think doing band-aid solutions, the list of building and fire code issues that are being discussed here are, like you say, we're cracking into improving this poor building again. When we have this conversation around the roof and the project around there, the original project that was brought forward for the grant at the time had to do with accessibility to washrooms and a bunch of other different ideas around it. But fixing one bit here, fixing one bit here, I agree. Like, that's not taking that bigger vision of where does the form fit in Revelstoke going forward? Is that really the best solution for having a long-term asset that is going to serve the community's needs? Now, whether that conversation belongs to the finance committee with the financial implications or if it needs to be part of that parks master plan and the facilities master plan that as far from what I understand, and Ms. Donato, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that that's that long-term vision, that conversation. I can't see spending city dollars on small upgrades now that may or may not be in line with that.
Well, and I think that's kind of what Councillor Palmer's getting at is, do we put good dollars after bad dealing with this or something that's going to maybe cost us more money and we still don't get the results we want? We still made, you know, we may put $5,000 into this just to have an architect look at it and still not be able to afford to put in toilets, that sort of thing, and give the hockey club what they want. So those are the questions, you know, that we need to give some thought to. If we're going to bring this to the finance committee and I deem the finance committee to be all of council, then we want to do that quickly and look at that and then get some implications and then go back to our director of parks and some implications and then go back to our director of parks and say this is kind of what we're thinking. But Mr. Matuzzi, any comments on this one?
Just want to proceed from, although I'm sure emotions to the committee. But that's a secondary until discussion that you're having. I can be forward into the next meeting and implement, but maybe, yeah, I'm just like, if comment. Your worship, thank you. I think that's exactly why this is here to this, that in principle, having a license is not the issue per se, the license, the issues directly. And Councilor Palmer, Councilor Shuret, really just outline exactly those kinds of concerns. You see how much you're going to spend just to see if you can even do it. And Ms. Donato, I think has done some good work with the liquor inspector. And, you know, there are implications of this. If it's a building, it doesn't mean some kind of code, then, you know, then maybe that's where I could put a lesser number of people. There are other implications that could impact the license as well. So I don't think it's as cut and dry as it necessarily looks. In the end, it may have, if additional costs are played on the place of the team, if there's less people able to participate, there's always some people should probably buy beer anyways. You know, this may be an expensive exercise for everyone else. I agree, your worship, I think, our referring to major questions, are you putting more money into this building? Yes or no? The liquor license, someone of a secondary, although I know it's to the team, you know, down like that.
Mr. Donato?
Thank you, your worship. I was just going to add that there are different considerations as well. And in speaking with the liquor inspector, what he's seen in other municipalities is when there are code compliance issues, a lot of times the occupancy in the facilities will be reduced in order to mitigate any risk associated with those compliance issues. So for example, right now, our facility, the occupant load is 1,000. But when you're serving alcohol, your occupant load would be determined by the number of seats in the facility. So the existing beer garden seats, 365. So if we add another 365 based on the other side being an exact replica of the beer garden side, you know, we're over 700 seats, but because we know the building doesn't comply, the fire inspector may choose to reduce the occupant load to, you know, 475 or 500. And then that would definitely impact the sales, as Mr. Matuzzi explained. There's a whole other scenario that could happen. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to do all these building improvements, but even if we didn't do the building improvements, there's no guarantee that the hockey franchise will be bringing in the revenue. They suspect they will be bringing in off of the beer garden sales if the occupant load is reduced.
Okay, so getting back, Mr. Nando, getting back to the motion. And Ms. Floyd, I'm going to get you to weigh in. From, from legislative point of view, the, the thing that we've got on the floor here, the motion we've got on the floor by Councilor Palmer, because this is committee of hold, do we direct this to the next council meeting to be brought in? And if so, do, does this, the staff report motion about the resolution in principle have validity here, or is that just sequestered at this point?
Can I just clarify?
Sure.
I'm just going to clarify the motion. So my understanding is that this is a recommendation to council, because this isn't their decision-making body.
Right. Okay, that's clarification. Thank you for that, Councilor. All right. So, so I'm just going to ask Ms. Floyd, when we talk about that, so we're going to, let's vote on this motion before I go any further. Councilor Ryan, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I don't think it makes sense to refer it to council until we have an idea of what those numbers are going to look like. You're not going to know what those numbers are going to look like until we hire that $3,000 qualified person. So is there anybody who's more interested in asking the Hockey Society if they cover that cost? Because until we have that done, we don't know what we're going to be talking about. We're going to be having the same conversation, just with a couple more people.
So, yeah, valid points. To me, it's this bigger picture of what we're doing with this building, because is that a waste of money?
But we, we don't know what the waste is. We don't know the scale of it. If it's put up a couple signs and, you know, you're good to go, then that's, seems like a no-brainer.
Seems a little more just with whatever it is important.
Yeah, so from, from my perspective, maybe not a no-brainer, but a small-brainer, is that I, I, I think it's a waste of money at this point, that we should be looking at the, we should be looking at the bigger, bigger picture. Where are we going in the future, rather than wait, in my view, wasting this, this money on the short term and create a facility that can do this? You can sort of see where it's, I can sort of see where it's going. And then just to answer, Councilor Ryan's, you know, question about, you know, should, before referring it to, counsel, while this is just an advisory at this point, we don't have that directive, but bill of care. And so, I, I'm saying go to the finance committee and further to Councilor Shuret's comments that, you know, I'm just looking for the right entity for that discussion. Maybe it's having a committee of hold with more information. It could be wherever, but there is big financial, potential financial implications. And so really, I'm looking at 2022 as to, on these kind of improvements. So anyway, I'm open, I'm open to other suggestions, but I think it's getting it back to, to that council and then to the council level. In this, in this dialogue in itself, will, I suspect, will the Grizzlies will be talking to Ms. Donato and possibly the mayor on, okay, where, where are we going with this thing?
Point of clarification. So, so, all I'm assuming from their part was that the, the building would necessarily have to be brought up into compliance unless the use of the building was changed. Is that correct?
Yes. So right now, the building is not a liquor primary license. So they're operating with a special occasion license that they make an application for every year. So the, if we were to make the facility liquor primary, we would have to go through the liquor and cannabis regulation branch, through the whole liquor policy that will involve public consultation. And the process takes anywhere from eight months to one year. So it would not happen this year regardless of what council decides. That's how far backlog the liquor board is. So we would be looking at this for next year.
Okay, thanks. I didn't, yeah, I didn't realize that. I thought it was the only, like if we were going to host, I don't know, roller derby games or something, then that's when it would become an issue. But it's, because it has to become a liquor primary occasion.
Further commentary?
No.
Councilor Shuret?
I'm curious through the chair if this code compliance analysis would be part of the facilities review that I'm under the impression that we are doing as part of the Parks Master Plan. Am I correct in that, or is...
Mr. Matuzzi, any comment on that from a planner's perspective?
We have some master plans in place.
Yeah, I don't know, but maybe, maybe, it's...
Mr. Donato, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so we've had different lifecycle costing analysis done on the facility, and we've had it looked at in terms of building and fire code, but not for a liquor primary license. So this, this is above and beyond what the, the facility is being used for right now. So that is something that I can put forward to the consultants as well for the Parks Master Plan.
That would be a good idea.
That definitely, if you could do that, that would be great. And so, Councilor Ryan?
And just further to that, the reason why I ask that is that I'm open to the idea of having that facility and discussing other facilities that we would be comfortable having as a liquor primary license. But with the changing laws in B.C., just moving away from the idea of a beer garden and opening up spaces for public events, I think it'd be worthwhile having that conversation as can we set up in place where Revelstoke is open to having liquor service in these spaces on a broader scale? Like we just saw Vancouver has made it legal to have open alcohol in parks, for example. I think with a tourism destination like we are, responsible alcohol consumption is part of the experience in a lot of cases, and that the forum seems like a good fit. So in principle, I am supportive, in support of this, just at that, making it part, yeah, making it part of our conversation on that broader scale, not on our own.
Okay. So, Mr. Donato, any further comment? When we start talking about liquor primary, are we talking building by building, or can we, you know, ask for an overarching liquor license for our facilities in general, you know?
Your worship, no, it's site-specific.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, I'm going to get back to the recommendation on the table by Mr. Palmer, that we send this to council to go to the finance committee. So any further comments on that? See none? You have a comment?
Can we just have it go to council and not go to finance? But do you want it to go to council so they can refer to finance, like?
Well, because the motion's going to go to council, council can take it wherever at that point, so that'll give us a little bit of time.
But just to clarify, the motion is supposed to go to council?
Because I think that might be a discussion in council and council. But, but by virtue of, sorry, through the chair, by virtue of the motion going to council, yeah, it says the finance committee, and we can try and wordsmith that, but because it's going to be there, council can make a different decision with that as well. And maybe it's a special council meeting.
Then is there additional information that we want from staff in order to make a decision? Because I don't know what information would help make this a little bit more clear, but maybe you do.
Well, I think we've gone through a lot of stuff on this building even since we've sat around this table, as to, you know, costs associated with bringing it up to code. And so I think looking at it, so I think Mr. Donato just made a valid point where bringing this up, if we were allowed to, you know, we doubled the 365 and now we're looking at 730 people, and then the liquor board says, well, no, you've got too many people in there now, so we're going to drop it down to 495. And so all of a sudden, they've lost that revenue of just having ticket holders going without buying moves. We might be putting them in a situation that's going to cost them money instead of enhance money. So I think we can just bring up that conversation at council and then go from there.
Okay, I have one question of other counselors. Is anybody interested in just having the dealer go out there to the Hockey Society that's like, you know, this could be very expensive, but if you're willing to cover all of our costs, whatever those may be, if it's janitorial with this professional, with whatever, at least give them that option? Is that something you're willing to do?
I think that would be part of the conversation, in my mind, that'd be part of the conversation with the finance committee. It's like, how are we going to find money to fund which parts of this project? What's involved with making this happen? And is the city comfortable with it, or can we build some sort of partnership with them?
But right now, since this is the, the less formal version of that, can we at least give that direction to staff so they can engage in those conversations? Like, is that even a conversation? Is the Hockey Society even willing to go there? If not, then it's a waste of all.
Ms. Donato, I'm going to ask you to weigh in.
Thank you, your worship. I have coordinated a meeting with the liquor inspector to do a site visit of the facility in September. And I'm going to invite the general manager for the Revelstoke Grizzlies. And at the same time, I can extend an invitation to the building inspector and to the fire inspector. And we can kind of have a group discussion at the facility and put this all into context for the operator and feel out his reaction to this. And it may be that he makes the decision himself that it's not worth his while, and then I can report back to council if that, that may make it easier if I have that conversation with all the parties. Because when I did speak to the liquor inspector a couple of days ago, I've spoken to two different liquor, liquor inspectors and have not got the same information from either of them. So it's been a bit challenging to figure out exactly who the approval authority is on the code compliance issues. But I think we've since clarified that. He did mention some workarounds, the code compliance issues. So if we could do the workarounds and if the operator was satisfied with the occupant load, there may be an opportunity to do the liquor license without having to do any significant improvements to the building. But that still won't alleviate the extra costs associated with the cleanup and the staffing and all that. So I just wanted to put that out there, but I can have those hard conversations at the site meeting in September and feel all parties out to see exactly what, what we should be doing or shouldn't be doing, or is everybody on board with it?
All right, that's great. Thank you. I think that's a prudent choice. So I think back to the motion on the table to send this to the finance committee by council. And any further comment on that motion? All who's in favor, opposed, motions carried, thank you. So I think that kind of ends this discussion regarding the form at this point, Mr. Nando. Going to move on to a discussion regarding Palmer's market location. So, Councilor Palmer?
Mayor Solz, I would suggest that we defer this to another time, because it was really, I brought that up, it was based on Councilor Elliott's interest, so I think it'd be better.
Like to have him on too. I think that's a prudent choice. Thank you.
Okay.
So we'll do that. And, and you're okay with that, Mr. Donato? Will we do, we have a full complement of committee of the whole to, to discuss the Palmer's market location?
Yes, your worship, that would be fine.
Awesome. All right, we have no other business on, on the docket this afternoon. Thank you all for your time. I'm going to ask for a motion to terminate the meeting. Councilor Shuret, seconded by Councilor Palmer, all in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you all for your time today. Appreciate it. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.